Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for December 3rd, 2013. I'm Dennis Cohane, the chairman. This is Tom Hurley, Selectman, and Katie Conlon, Selectman. This is Emery Fagan, O-Town Administrator, and Paula Rizzi, our Executive Secretary. First item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes for November 19th and 21st.
Okay. Move the November 19th and 21st, 2013 minutes as three minutes.
Second.
Motion was made in second. Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Number three is confirm future meeting dates. So we're going to meet on the 10th of December and the 17th. Everyone good with that?
Those dates are good. And Mr. Chairman, I think one item, or the Town Administrator, one item we should probably include on at least one of those agendas is the DOR report. We wanted to keep that on our agendas. It's not on for tonight and there's nothing that we have to discuss for tonight, but the warrant deadline for, the warrant closing deadline is early January. So we'll want to decide in December or early January whether there's any articles we need to put forward for the May Town Meeting. So I think we should keep the DOR agenda, the DOR report on the agenda so that we can talk about the Audit Committee and anything else that comes out of that that we might want to include. Do we know whether the Town Moderator has appointed members to the Town Government Study Committee?
To my knowledge, the Town Moderator has not to date appointed any members to that committee.
So, okay.
Can we reach out to him?
I will. I will reach out to him tomorrow.
So they have to be in by January.
They really kind of need, because we appointed four, so in order for quorum, they need five members, so.
That's correct. It's a nine-member committee. And five appointed by the Town Moderator, four appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So you're correct. They cannot meet and deliberate because they do not have a quorum at this time.
They had been looking at some of the DOR recommendations to see what they might recommend we put forward for articles, so that would be good to follow up on that.
I will.
Thank you.
The only other thing is, do you want to talk about a time for goals and objectives? We had talked about doing a January meeting perhaps for that. My thought again was, was just kind of do it on a Saturday, do it away from Town Hall, casual meeting where we could, still be a public meeting obviously, but just casual.
This is goals and objectives for the Town Administrator?
Yes.
Yes.
For the rest of 2014?
Yeah, it could, it could stretch beyond that, I suppose, but, but yeah, what's basically, what's on our mind right now, you know, what do we want to see, what do we want to see happen over the next year?
Okay. You want to do it in January?
Yes. We originally talked about doing it in December, but I think the timeframe is too tight in December. It's a holiday, so.
It is, and I think you were overloaded with work as well. Now that you got a, we'll be bringing him up shortly, our new Assistant Town Administrator.
That's right.
You'll have much more time to concentrate on your goals and objectives.
Do you want to email me some possible dates in January that are available? And I'll pick a common one and confirm.
Sure. You're thinking of a Saturday, Tom?
I'm thinking of a Saturday, and if we are, probably early, you know, like the second Saturday would be best for me because the next one.
Where are you thinking of having it?
I'm open, but we could have it in my office. I've got a big conference room. And again, I think if we're going to have it on a Saturday, it still is an open meeting, but we probably should report out at our next meeting after that what, what we finally came up with for goals and objectives.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of the difficulty, since it is an open meeting for the press, if it's at an, well, it's just something we're going to have to think about logistics.
Right.
And we got to decide how many goals and objectives.
Yes. Less than a hundred.
Yes, definitely less than a hundred.
Manageable amount.
So you'll send out an email. We'll get back to you with dates.
That's right. And then I'll pick a common date and send it back out.
And then we should have a set number of like three each or four each or something.
Yeah. I mean, it can, it can be, it can be more than that, but you've got to pare it down to something reasonable.
Correct. Well, what we used to do for the Superintendent of Schools is all the school committee members would write all their goals and objectives on a board, and then we'd cross out the ones that were the same. And we'd end up with about 10.
Right.
And that was it then.
Yeah, that sounds like a good approach.
Next up is Citizen Speak, but we're actually going to skip Citizen Speak just for a moment. We're going to bring up our new Assistant Town Administrator, which is Michael Blanchard. Welcome, Michael.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Michael Blanchard started yesterday as the new Assistant Town Administrator, and he actually came back again today for his second day. And he's a welcome addition to our office. He actually hit the ground running. So already got some projects on his plate to work on, and we're really pleased to be at full complement in the Selectmen's office.
I think we're the same. We, it's no secret that it has been a very, has been kind of an upheaval of a year, to say the least. And Emery has been under tremendous pressure. And we welcome, we welcome you to Town Hall. We expect you to take a lot of the workload off our shoulders.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Not put it on ours.
Exactly. Michael, you're going to be a busy guy for, for a few weeks anyways because you're going to be wearing two hats, correct? You're going to be still.
A little bit of the other hat, yeah, at times, yeah, yeah. But thank you. I'm very excited. It's only been two days, but it's been terrific. Paula and Tricia have been terrific, bringing me up to speed, and I just feel real privileged to work with Emery and taking as much as I can. And I do hope to take a good load off her, and I am excited to get going, and I hope, I hope I've already started, so.
Absolutely.
I'm sure the Board of Health misses you already.
I, I think so, and again, I'd just like to say publicly, I really do appreciate my time with the Board of Health. They were just terrific and really put me in a place that I was able to take this position and hopefully contribute in a, in a positive way. So, thank you.
Michael, for people who are watching who don't know, haven't met you before, who are, might be at home watching, you've been the Town's Public Health Agent for how many years?
Almost 10 years.
You worked with the Board of Health, and you had a staff of three people in the Health Department.
Correct.
Tom and I both had the privilege of working with you when we ran the Warrant Committee, and you came in to go over the health budget or any health-related articles for Town Meetings, so I know the Board of Health is sorry to see you go, but we're.
What a droning act that was, too. Because that was definitely a limited budget.
Yes.
I appreciate that.
So you're a familiar face around Town Hall.
Absolutely.
A welcome addition to this office.
Absolutely. Welcome again, Michael.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, next up is Citizen Speak. First person, I know we have some people here from the Hillside Association. If we could have anybody but the Hillside to come up first. Okay, Cheryl.
As most people already know, I'm Cheryl Flightman, Co-Chair of MCAI, Milton Citizens Against Aviation Impact. And I just have a quick update. The committee's been busy in getting some more information, and I've been asked to speak a few places. From here, I'm going over to the library to speak at the Breschel Neighborhood Association. Roxanne Musto asked if I would do the presentation there that I did at Town Meeting. And I had a meeting with Mary Gormly, and she wants me to present at next week's PTO President's Meeting. And hopefully, I'll be able to get in front of the individual PTO groups to make them aware of the real problems children can develop from the pollution. And I think if we can get the parents involved, that will be a huge step because that is one very large voice. And then later this evening, Anne Marie has a very exciting announcement about Congressman Michael Capellano. And that's it for right now.
Thank you, Cheryl. Thank you for your good work. Anyone else here besides, okay, we'll open the floor. Yeah, is, are you from the Hillside Association?
No.
Okay, come to the, you can come to the table. We know there's a good few from Hillside here. Sorry. Hello?
Hello. Thank you. My name is Christopher Stone, and I live at 36 Lodge Street in Milton. And I'm here tonight just to update the Selectmen and the town as a whole on kind of what's been going on with the proposed site for the temple for the congregation of Beth Shalom of Blue Hills. I made a copy for everybody. As everyone is aware, our neighborhood and I are opposed to the use of Lodge Street as the main access for the, for the proposed temple. In a little less than a month, my neighbors and I have collected over 400 signatures in support of our opposition to Lodge Street as the primary access. The total number of signatures is more than three times the amount of people currently in the congregation. If you remove non-Milton residents, it's approximately four times. These petitions have been signed by citizens throughout Milton and not just by people who live within our immediate neighborhoods or are our friends. Our petition is meant to highlight to the Gordons and to the town that many citizens in Milton share our concerns and objections regarding this issue. We and other citizens do not want to see our lives directly impacted by groups of people that are well-connected within town and feel entitled to get whatever they want from the town, no matter who it affects. Our family, our, members of our neighborhood families met with members of the Beth Shalom Congregation on November 6th. In that meeting, we, it was a very nice meeting, and in that meeting, we discussed many topics regarding the proposed temple location. We asked the members directly if they had any preference to which street, Lodge Street or Gun Hill, was used as the primary access road. The members attending the meeting said they did not care which street was used. We asked if the congregation members would speak to the Gordons about changing the primary, or considering changing the primary access road. Much to our delight, the members of the temple agreed to do that with the president reaching out to the Gordons. Our hope was that the Gordons might listen to people they have a relationship with and reconsider their decision. We found out today that the Gordons are not, do not care to change anything. In the last Town Meeting I attended, Andrea Gordon said my neighbors and I objected, objected at this temple out of fear and that we should just trust, trust her. I do not have a relationship with Mrs. Gordon. Many of our members of our neighborhood do not have a, have a relationship with her. To dismiss our concerns as fear is not, it's not accurate. Our issue is the use of a densely populated street as the main access to a commercial building when a perfectly usable option exists on a less populated street. This is called common sense, not fear. Our other objective is trust is earned, not given. For example, two families that would be the most, that could be the most impacted by this project, meaning their properties would have bought the proposed property and the access road, each have 20- to 30-year relationships with the Gordon family. Each of these Lodge Street families has respectfully request, expressed to the Gordons that they do not want the primary access next to their respective homes. The Gordons have not, this has not moved the Gordons either. This, how is this a way that we can earn trust? Would anybody in this room treat people, let alone longstanding relationships, this way? The simple fact is, they seem entitled to do whatever they want, no matter the objections of their fellow citizens. We also have concerns for the way that, that the town of Milton is handling this. The building of a temple or any religious or community, or commercial facility in the middle of a densely populated neighborhood is a nearly unprecedented issue in Milton. The town owes it to the taxpayers and the voters to review this as stringently as necessary and not just wave it through without any thought. The town needs to take every step possible to ensure its residents of the impacted community are protected and listened to during this process. Excuse me. I am concerned that the town will continue to, to not take our concerns seriously and just brush us off as the Gordons have, as being fearful. We are not fearful. We, we just feel that common sense is not being applied. In closing, there are only really two outcomes to this situation. The Gordons can listen to Lodge Street neighborhood, the Milton community, and members of their own congregation and agree to change the primary access to the temple, or this can be, or the Gordons can force this building out of our neighborhood. The actions they choose will be their legacy within Milton. This is how they will be known, this is how they'll be known. It would be a shame if their choice reflected poorly on the congregation or anyone else associated with them. Our neighborhood will not, our neighborhood is deeply concerned about this. The Gordons have the ability to alleviate this situation by creating a space that meets the needs and wishes for all parties involved. And I guess I would just continue to say, we continue to hope to have a open dialogue, but eventually, you know, we feel like we're just hitting our heads against the wall, and we'll have to view other steps that we could take to hopefully get, get the attention and hopefully come to an agreement with them.
So just on a point of clarification, the neighborhood is in favor of the temple, you're just not in favor of the access to the temple?
I think, yes. Well, I mean, we're, I can't speak for everybody, but we are in, we are in, united against the, against the use of our street as the primary access. Whether, you know, I think the temple as a whole, that's for other people to, to speak and, you know, and, and that's, you know, that's, I believe, a separate issue. The issue that we, that deeply concerns us right now is the use of the, for the access road. Okay? All right.
Well, keep the, keep the dialogue going.
We'll try, we'll try. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for Citizen Speak? Okay, we can, yeah, yeah. Hello?
Hello. Evening. Yes. My name is Ralph Jaeger. I live on 188 Hillside Street. And I'm speaking to you tonight as capacity of the President of the Hillside Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to use this forum to express the Hillside Neighborhood Association's concern regarding Todd Hamilton's 40B proposal of Hillside Street by Ford Ranch Road, something that's on the agenda item also for later discussion tonight, as I understand, reading the, the minutes. As President of the Hillside Neighborhood Association, I represent, or we represent over 140 dwellings on Hillside, Parkwood Drive Development, Hardin Street, Ford Ranch Road, Forest Street, Stone Hill Lane, and Brook Lane. And by unanimous vote on November 25, members of the Hillside Neighborhood Association declared their opposition to a 40B project. We are not at all opposed to the cause of affordable housing in Milton, but we urge the Selectmen and the town to prioritize optimal locations, which are conducive to the development of neighborhoods and which are not destructive to habitat or present big safety concerns due to disproportionate traffic increase and/or fundamentally and irreparably change the nature of historically registered neighborhoods. The Hillside Neighborhood Association appreciates the necessity of developing affordable housing in Milton, but we reject the idea of haphazard 40B project discussions in historic zone district or in ecologically highly sensitive environments when other alternatives exist. Milton is on its way to meet the 10% affordable housing criteria with the development of the Muse and Randolph and other projects that might be ongoing. And in the spirit of continuing the town's thoughtful affordable housing agenda, the HNA urges the Selectmen not to strive for your successful implementation and not to jeopardize Milton's historic and ecological contribution to society and future generations. One of our major concerns is traffic and safety. The town created additional stop signs, slow signs, additional speed bumps on Forest Street, on Hardin Street, and two on Hillside Street. And one of those speed signs, speed bumps and stop signs was placed at the corner of Hillside Street and Ford Ranch Road, with the town clearly acknowledging that this particular intersection is hazardous, overtrafficked, and very frequently sped through. This is not the place for a 40B development of any size, let alone the size that's proposed, even if it's slightly modified. Ford Ranch is a very small road. Hillside is a winding, bumpy road, still used as a cut-through for many traveling to and from Boston. You have walkers, you have baby carriage strollers. We've had a huge amount of inflow from new, kind of younger families with kids, horseback riders, young kids on bikes, all with no sidewalk. There's no sidewalk on Hillside, as you may know. You also have a lot of wildlife. Deers and wild turkeys frequently crossing the streets in all the neighborhood. All these are hazards that cannot support additional traffic. A rental project would also not be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, which is homeownership or homeowners on large lots. Furthermore, the homeownership project, even if it's in a modified way, assuming a 50-unit proposal, would produce only 13 units, which would count on the state subsidized housing inventory. That small number of affordable housing units does not warrant the adverse consequences to the neighborhood. There are significant wetlands surrounding the proposed development site. An intensive 40B development would not be appropriate in such an area. Local wetland protections should not be overridden. The wetlands crossing from Ford Ranch Road would be essentially, especially problematic. So I'd like also to bring to your attention that the neighborhood and the abudders are in the process of finalizing alternative proposals for discussion with Mr. Hamilton, the developer, which will maximize his economic returns compared to a long-lasting, uncertain, disruptive, and costly 40B project. So I'd like to ask the Selectmen to take this all into consideration as the Hillside Neighborhood looks to engage constructively with Mr. Hamilton to discuss alternative proposals which should be economically more attractive to him and his investors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for? Leave it at that? I think so, yeah, okay. All right. Well, I'm sure we'll have a question on the, on that project over the next few months. Okay, we thank you for coming in. No one else for Citizen Speak? Anyone else for Citizen Speak? Okay, we'll leave it at that. Next up is the number five on the agenda, Classification of Property According to Use. Continue. I'd like to welcome up Jim.
Jim McCallum.
Jim McCallum?
Board of Assessors.
No, no. We're in five. Yeah, Jeff Dambly. Jeff Dambly, yeah. And the assessors. Kim Henderson.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
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 Go on, Jim.
Do we have to go around and shake? You're okay.
Salute. There you go.
Welcome. You kindly introduce yourselves to the public.
I'm Jim Henderson, Chairman of the Board of Assessors.
Bill Bennett, Member of the Board of Assessors.
Jeff Dambly, Chief Appraiser for the Board of Assessors.
Welcome. I was in Easton last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting there, and they were actually doing the same thing, so I'm a little bit versed in what you're here for. But I guess you're here to tell us how you came up with the tax rate for the, for property this year.
Okay. Okay, I've copies of the reports. Who doesn't want a copy? Oh, wait, I had notes. I want.
What?
Yeah, have you done this before?
I have no.
Lost your script?
No, it's on the back. No?
Oh, no.
Lost your script?
Yeah.
Now he doesn't know.
Oh, there it is. All right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, what we're here to is present information, decisions regarding classification, classification of the levy for the town of Milton for 2014. Under Chapter 40, Section 56, there are several decisions to be made. One is to determine the amount of the tax levy which each class of property is to bear. Two, a policy decision regarding allowance of a residential exemption of up to 20%, and a decision on the amount of the tax levy that open space will bear in relation to the residential class, and policy decision as needed regarding a small commercial exemption. If we go to page, well, I guess with respect to, let's start with the easy one. Open space, currently, we have no classified open space in the town. There's an exemption that may be allowed, but we don't, typically, it's land, small value, vacant land, rear land, and we have not classified that as, as open space. Residential tax exemption allows the Selectmen to pick a, an exemption for residence, single-family prop, residential properties only. It's to be born within the class. And it's based, if you go to page three, and this is using, the example I'm using is a 20% exemption. And I'm using the same shift that we did last year to come up with these numbers of 150. So without the exemption, we're looking at, and using the 150% split, we would see a tax rate of $14.99. A 20% exemption would create a tax rate of $18.45 and a 10% of $16.54. And that's all based on the average assessed value of all residential parcels, which this year is $507,779. So you're allowed to deduct $50,777 from the assessed value times the applicable tax rate. 10% would be $18.45, and I'm sorry, 20% would be $18.45. 10% would be $16.54. So if you look at the chart, as you go down in value, the exemption means more as a percent. As you get up above roughly $530,000 in value, you're seeing a higher tax bill for those properties above that value. The classes, the tax is born entirely within that class. So the higher value properties support the lower value properties.
Jeff, just out of curiosity, I know we typically don't have this exemption in ours. Boston, I believe, does. Do many other communities have such an exemption?
To be honest, I can't say exactly how many. There, it is used, it's usually in bigger cities with lots of apartment buildings.
There are Brookline does. They have some similar to Boston.
I think the West are like 14 communities that have it, and they are Boston, Brookline, Cambridge, Chelsea. So they have a lot of apartment units. And other, other towns that have second homes. So if you're non-occupant, then you're, you're going to be paying.
Paid full price, yeah.
So it'd just be communities like Bonstadt Bowl and then Tucket that, that would have. So there's only 14 communities that have this exemption.
Okay.
And then the third is a commercial exemption. You may approve an exemption up to 10%, which is applied to Class III commercial properties. Again, it's, it's born only within that class. You'll end up with different tax rates. It can only be applied to a business with an average annual employment of no more than 10 individuals during a previous calendar year, as certified by the Department of Employment and Training, and have a valuation of less than $1 million. That doesn't have to, the parcel doesn't have to be owned by the occupying business or any other eligible business, but if it has multiple commercial tenants, all occupants must be eligible businesses. And it has to be less than $1 million. Currently, 148 commercial mixed-use properties of these 17 are valued at over $1 million and therefore not eligible. Of the remaining 131, only 24 are certified by the Department of Employment and Training. And again, the exemption is absorbed within the class. I think the exemption granted in this would put the burden on those properties. As an example, just the Greenspan building, multiple tenants, it's over $1 million, but if you're helping business, it's just going to get passed down. On page five. Now we're down to the split rate. We've completed our interim adjustments for 2014, using calendar 2012, and using those sales and new growth, there've been some small changes. We've seen, it's, it's good to see the values going up. Average single-family home has increased in value from $508,260 to $1,00516, roughly 1.58%. Condominiums have seen about a 0.6%. Two, three families have gone up about 1.6%. Commercial industrial classes have remained about the same, and personal property has decreased. The total taxable value of the town has grown by approximately 1.4%. In fiscal 2013, the percentage of commercial, industrial, and personal property was 4.17. In 2014, it was, it's 4.0573%. So we've seen a slight decrease in the percentage of commercial, industrial, and personal property to the total assessed value. This also allows us to shift it to 175%. And the maximum shift of 175 would create a tax rate of $14.83 and $26.80 respectively. If we allowed the same adjustment from last year, in other words, the same percentage of CIP, it would work out to 154%. As, if the same exact adjustment in relation to all the classes would be 154%. That would result in a tax rate of $14.92 and $23.58. The historical shift of 150, which the Board has recommended, recommended in the The historical shift of 150, which the Board has recommended in the past, would allow for tax rates of $14.99 and $22.97. And down below, you can see the differences in the rate. Actual rate of 2013 at the 150 for that year was $14.70 and $22.54. At 175, a possible rate of $14.83 and $26.80. The 154 percent adjustment, which is the exact same adjustment as last year, would be $14.92 and $23.58. And the 150 would be $14.99 and $22.97. And then down below, I've put in average tax bills at the 150 percent rate, which is what the Board of Assessors is recommending. So, the Board's recommending residential factor representing 150 percent adjustment at 97.8855, that no residential exemption be adopted, no open space discount be adopted, and no small commercial exemption be adopted.
It's interesting looking at this, Jeff. And obviously because of the huge disparity between the commercial base being so small and the residential base being so large, that a large change in the commercial rate by going up to the 175 is only a small change in the residential rate.
Correct. Yes, correct.
You're saying about a change in the shift to 175?
Yeah, if you shift it. Yeah, it hugely impacts the commercial rate.
Right, and even if from the 150 to the 154, you're looking at a dollar for higher.
Compared to seven cents.
With only a seven cent difference at the 150, you're looking at 29 cents residential and 43 cents commercial, industrial, and personal property. So, the Board felt that was.
Yep. Yeah, especially where, like you said, virtually all of our commercial spaces is either small commercial or larger buildings that are small tenants.
Correct.
So, Jeff, can you, in layman's terms, can you tell us what the increase will be on a traditional, single-family and a commercial building?
For a single-family home, average assessed value of $516,317, you're looking at a $269 increase for the year. Commercial, average commercial, $660,487, you're looking at a $302 increase over last year.
Okay. Again, the other thing, probably, because I get asked this question a lot, we're in Proposition Two and a Half, my tax bill's going up 3.6 percent. And obviously, it's because of the change in the relative value of commercial compared to residential property.
Right, well, you're also looking at the net levy of last year. If you go to page six, that's the levy compensation that's been approved by the DOR. We're starting in 2013 with a levy limit of $62,453,928. We add two and a half percent.
And new growth.
New growth, which was not high. And then we've got a debt exclusion of $2,891,683. These are all for prior bonding. Now, last year, I believe, there was a fairly substantial decrease in the debt exclusion, because I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, was bond premiums from the school project that got paid back?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So, there was a one-year decrease in the debt exclusion.
And then it was back up again.
And now the debt exclusion has bumped back up. So, the total, the net levy on page, on page five at the bottom, you're looking at a 3.376 percent increase in the net, in the tax levy.
Jeff, has 150 percent been the shift that's been used by the Board for several years?
Number of years, yes.
For a while? Has the Board considered doing something in between 150 and 175? If not this year, at different times?
We looked at it. I mean, if the commercial property was up, you know, but that's speculation for another year.
And Jeff, a lot of people will say that the assessed value of my property went down, yet my taxes went up. Is that because we have to meet a certain threshold every year to pay our bills?
Well, the town's, the town's still spending.
Right.
More money. So, if it goes down, the tax rate's based on you take assessed value and divide that into the levy, that gives you your tax rate.
Right.
So, even if you go down, everybody goes down. If the town spending stays the same or goes up, if it goes up, you're still going to see an increase.
All right. You have a motion here? Somebody want to make it?
I'll let Katie do this one, because I got to read the big one afterwards.
That's true, you do. All right, well, I will move that we adopt a minimum residential factor of 97.8855. That we not adopt a residential exemption, not adopt an open space discount, and not adopt a small commercial exemption.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment?
Nothing further.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
I just want to add, we're talking about number six, which is the bond refinancing will help that debt exclusion number, at least somewhat.
Yeah, I think Mr. McCallum has very good news on that.
You get to bring the bad news. He brings the good news.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bill. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. I've got, okay, this is two versions of the same form because they print out differently. So, it's just, it's just this one shows that the Boards, my Board, signed it too. So, what'll happen is when I submit this, it'll say, "I've submitted on behalf of Board of the Selectmen, and these are on file."
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks again. Number six is the approval of the 2006 bonding refinance. I believe you have some good news for us.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for a minute? I'm going to be recused on this because the law firm that I work for is the Town's Bond Council, so.
Just some of the debate.
Pass them down.
Okay. Thank you, Katie.
These people I work with have done some work on this with Jim. I'm going to have to be recused.
Okay.
It's not often the tax clerk that gets good news.
Anyway, is this Jim McCallum, our Town Treasurer?
I put a little packet together. One is the AAA, what's actually happening. The last page was if we remained at the AA, just to show the difference in the bonding. And what we're rebonding is the Collycott Cunningham Bond from 2006.
Yep.
It was callable after eight years, so there's 12 years remaining on it, which we are refinancing.
It was what, did you say?
Callable.
Callable.
It was callable. So, what's, bonds, some bonds are callable, some are not. This one's callable. The one for 2005 is callable after 10 years. We're doing the one that's, this is 2006, it's callable after eight years. So, we put it up to bond and came back with a rate of 2.0685. That is down from the rate we were paying of 4.101. It's going to save the town over the next 12 years $1,785,930.81. It will knock $148,828 off the taxes each year for the next 12 years.
Is this a direct result of going from a double A to a triple A?
Actually, it's, we're recalling the bond anyway. If you see on the last page of this packet, I put a estimate in on the double A rating. With the double A rating, the bond would have been refinanced at 2.47, saving the town $1.6 million. So, with the triple A rating, it's quite a difference.
That is a big difference.
It's 40 basis points.
Can you explain to me and the public, I know Tom knows this answer, but I don't, why did we get a, why did we move from a double A rating to a triple A rating? What did we do right?
We did a lot of things right. And what happens when you go for a rerating, you have a conference call with the standard of course. And Emery was here, I was here, Bill Clark, Jeff Dambly, and Amy Dexter. We ran over the financials, we ran over new growth, what's happening in the town, just laid it all out for them. And apparently, we told a very good story because we went from a double A, jumped over double A plus to a triple A rating, which is usually unheard of. They liked the fact that our revenue projections were always on the conservative side. We always were within our budget, and last couple of years, we had good free cash.
Right.
So, with all those factors, we're putting money away to the reserve funds, they like that. They'd like to see that as a written policy. So, that's something we'd have to work on this year. Get it in writing, make it a policy. They're going to put so much away each year for the OPEB, for the capital stabilization, for the stabilization fund. And they'd like to see that in writing. You've got to do these things to maintain your triple A rating.
We're still discussing whether we're going to set up an OPEB trust or not at this point, but, and whether that makes any sense, but.
A what trust?
An OPEB, of the post-employment benefit trust.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But that aside, I think our, even though they're still quite modest, at least we have been building reserves, and we had not been in years past.
And they'd like to see that, that we are making the effort. And the plan seems to be, once we fund the pension in full, then we're going to use those funds to really knock down the OPEB.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah, we had looked, a couple of years ago, we had looked into perhaps refining, or doing a, an advanced bond issue, because we was concerned where's the bond rate's going to go, are they going to go back up again? There's one mechanism whereby you could do an early bond issue. You basically bank the money. You've got something called an arbitrage problem, but there are ways to invest it to avoid that problem. And then when the bond becomes callable, then you have the money there at the low interest rate. We decided that there's something called negative arbitrage. In other words, you're investing the money, but you're paying the interest on the bond at more than what you're getting.
Was that for the pension?
No, that was for this one.
Oh, okay.
That was for this one a couple of years ago.
Oh.
And we decided not to do it because.
Yeah, advanced refunding.
Yes.
And we looked into that, and last year, we looked into it both ways. At the time, we're double A rated, and the bond rate was up a little bit. It would have saved $1 million to do what we're doing today that we're saving the 1.785. But the advanced refunding, it would have only saved about a half million dollars at the time.
Right. We just ran the risk that the interest might go up.
We ran the risk. We saw what the federal government was doing. We knew they were going to keep the bond rates down because they weren't making any progress, so.
But now, with our triple A rating and looking at future callable bonds, we might want to think about that process again.
Well, the next callable bond will come up this time next year.
Yeah.
And that's for the 2005, which was a 10-year callable bond.
Okay.
So, I mean, we keep our eye on it. If we do see it jumping up, we can jump in any time with the advanced refunding.
That's right.
I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Save the taxpayers. And there's also, I talked to Tony Chikello a few weeks ago, and there's another $130,000 in OSEP funds coming, which will go towards the tax rate also.
Yeah, yeah. And everybody should understand, too, this, for the most part, like 99.9 percent of this refunding is over the levy limit or debt exclusion.
Yes, this goes right back to the taxpayer.
Hundred percent back, yeah, right. It doesn't free up anything for the town in terms of spendable dollars, but it does give the tax rate.
Yeah, gives the taxpayer a break. It's not often the tax clerk can say that.
Yes. So, that being said, I will, I will move that in order to reduce the interest costs, the Treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter Forty-Four, Section Twenty-One A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, to refund all of the town's $13,404,000 general obligation municipal purpose loans of 2006 bonded, bonds dated January 15, 2006, maturing on and after January 15, 2015, the refunding bonds, refunded bonds. And that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds and the cost of the issuance of the refunded bonds. The sale of $6,260,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated December 11, 2013, the bonds, to Robert W. Baird and Company, Inc., at a price of $6,512,766.41 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on January 15 of the years and in principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. 2015, the amount is $645,000. The interest rate is 2 percent. 2016, $595,000, 2 percent. 2017, $580,000, 3 percent. 2018, $575,000, 2 percent. 2019, $560,000, 2 percent. 2020, $540,000, 4 percent. 2021, $485,000, 3 percent. 2022, $480,000, 3 percent. 2023, $470,000, 2 and 1/2 percent. 2024, $455,000, 2.5 percent. 2025, $445,000, 3 percent. 2026, $430,000, 3 percent. That, in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 12, 2013, and a final official statement dated November 25, 2013, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved, and adopted. That the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as set forth in the official statement. That the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15 C-2-12 in such form as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by refinance, reference in the bonds in, for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. That we authorize and direct the Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the Treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or as such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and to maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. That each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, and other documents as may be determined by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. Are you going to second that?
Take a drink of water.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion?
No, I'm out of breath anyways.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCallum. Thank you for coming in. Number seven on the agenda is the approval of the FY14 Fire Department Education Incentive. Can you tell us what this is, Emery?
Yes, this is the Fire Department Education Incentive Program. It's for the firefighters that take courses in fire science and firefighting-related courses. And each year, they receive an education incentive check. And the credits are $48.25 per credit, and they're calculated on the number of credits that they've received.
They receive the check from the Town of Milton.
They receive a check from the Town of Milton.
Is this already paid, and we're just reimbursing them?
This will be paid once you approve it. It's in their fiscal 14 budget, so it is budgeted in their budget each year.
And the total is $96,000.
Yes.
I'll move that we approve the FY14 Fire Department Education Incentive in the amount of $96,162.25, which reflects 1,993 total credits at $48.25 per credit.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight, approval of the DPW appointments.
Okay, I'll move to approve the rec.
Good. Actually, did you want to say something?
Oh, I was just going, I thought you wanted an explanation on the two positions.
No, you can read the recommendations.
Okay.
Move to approve the recommendation of the Public Works Director to appoint Sean Peterson, Nine Herald Street, to the position of Labor W-3 in the Department of Public Works, contingent upon approval by the Personnel Board, a successful pre-employment physical exam, and a Cory background check.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll move that we approve the recommendation of the Public Works Director to appoint Warren Nicholson, 77 Lancaster Street, Quincy, to the position of Mechanic W-6 in the Department of Public Works, contingent upon approval by the Personnel Board, a successful pre-employment physical exam. physical exam, and a Cory background check.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight, approval of the change of manager for 88 Wharf Restaurant. If I could say something immediately, I'd like to see, I mean, I'll still go ahead and vote with you guys on this tonight, but whenever we're dealing with a liquor license, it would be nice to see the person whose name the liquor license is going into be here.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I mean, it is a liquor license, there's a lot of liability with a liquor license, and it would be nice to meet the person, just going forward, I think.
I'll move that we approve a change of manager for 88 Wharf Restaurant from John Collings to Mark Wakem, and to forward the pertinent paperwork to the ABCC.
Second. Any further comment?
Do we know anything about the new manager?
That's a good question, actually.
Oh, we really have, just the application?
I actually have the resume.
Oh, okay.
You want to show that to Dennis?
Paula, if you wouldn't mind coming up here again. My computer is...
You're going wonky again?
Gone again, yep. When I opened... Time for IT.
Battery maybe, that's what's going on.
He does have a lot of experience as a manager.
He actually was here earlier, but I didn't realize he wanted to come in for the meeting. But he'll be happy to come in anytime you want, I think.
Yeah, quite a bit.
So we had a motion, was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Number 10, approval of the 2014 Blue Hills Classic Bike Race.
I'll move to approve the use of the town's streets and ways for the 7th Annual Blue Hills Classic Race sponsored by the Blue Hills Cycling Club, scheduled to take place on Sunday, May 4, 2014, contingent upon approval by the Chief of Police.
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 11, the town school committee appointments.
I'll move that we appoint Amy Dexter, Anne Marie Fagan, and James McAuliffe to a committee that will explore the consolidation of school and town functions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comment? Except that this is a...
Yeah, I mean, it's a committee that I'm looking forward to hearing.
We're all looking forward to this.
And the schools have already appointed Glenn Pavlicek and Mike Zulus.
That's correct.
Yes, and if I may add, the committee will draft a charge, which they will present to the Board of Selectmen and to the school committee for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 12, Capital Improvement Study Committee Appointment.
Okay, I'll approve the appointment of Michael Hale, 500 Brook Road, to serve on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, to serve through August 2014.
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Number 13, Town Administrator's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple of things to mention. I wanted to let you know that Town Council did the call this afternoon to inform the Board that he has filed the Governor Stoughton complaint in probate court, and he filed that on November 22, 2013.
So at this point, we don't really know anything about how long that process might take, but once it comes out of that process, then it will be available to go to the planning board for...
That's correct, that's correct.
We don't have a copy of the complaint yet, but we'll get, we'll get a copy.
The Town Council is in the, is preparing that whole package for you, and he will get it to you shortly. But he just wanted you to know that it was filed.
Good.
One other thing I would like to mention is that on Saturday, December 7, there will be a Holiday Artisan Plan, a fair at, Artisan Fair at Milton Artspace, and it's from, I think, 11 to 4 p.m. And one of the main events will be young children creating ornaments, which will be hung on the town Christmas tree in the square.
Oh, cool.
And this is a sample of some of the ornaments that the children
Show those around.
Made in the past. Very nice.
Always nice to see children at work.
We don't have a TV up, I can't see if anybody can see them, but...
I know.
This will be a wonderful event. This is a partridge in a pear tree.
Okay, yeah.
So that, again, is taking place this Saturday, December 7.
And this is the Arts Center?
And it's at the Milton Arts Center, and we're just located in the former East Milton Library building. The other exciting news that I would like to let the Board know about is that Congressman Michael Capuano has agreed to come to the town of Milton on December 16, at 6:30 p.m., to have a question and answer for him with town officials and residents of the town regarding airplane issues. So we are in the process of advertising that event, and we hope we do get a lot of citizens and residents of the town to attend. It will be held at the Consulate and Aging at 10 Walnut Street.
Great, excellent, thank you.
Can we add one item to the Town Administrator's Report? One of the benefits of being recused is I got to talk to the assessors out in the hall. I meant to mention it while they were here, but we're close to appointing the pilot committee, and they're very enthusiastic about that. Jim Henderson had some ideas about getting someone from the nonprofit world to be appointed.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so, but I know, Emery, there's one more person you're talking to, but we have four people designated already that we're just, who are interested, that we're just waiting to hear from. So hopefully, one of the next couple of meetings, we get the pilot committee in place.
Yes, and I will reach out to the nonprofits and see if we can get someone from Curry and Milton, Milton Hospital and Milton Academy to volunteer to be on that committee as well.
Apparently, Jim had talked to somebody at some conference from the Boston, Boston Committee.
Jim Henderson.
Jim Henderson, yes. And somebody that was on the Boston Pilot Committee and asked how they did it, how they were so successful, and basically said that, you know, with having nonprofit representatives on that committee, it got buy-in
It had some buy-in.
From the nonprofit community. So, I think it makes a lot of sense.
And number 14 is the Chairman's Report, which I don't have a report tonight, anything to report, but I will the next night. I have, I was telling Emery I give the last four days in bed, so I'm thankful to be here tonight. So we'll move right into executive session. I'll make a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, the Hamilton 40B project, believing that having this discussion in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn. Mr. Condon?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane? Yes. We're in executive session.